Yeah, well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
It doesn't want to speak. I'm not a white printer.
Oh.
Can you scan this and send these everybody on the board, please? Well, on the plan. I mean, you might send them to us too if you're. If, if, if one more cruise of course.
One call we can add myself, Amy, Joe Marbo, and this is. No.
Sorry.
It's still. The mirror. I.
Oh, I'm glad.
It's basically the auditors sold up. The audit stopped just a part of the whole. A lot of the. And so it's. All right. And did it benefit the government? Yes. Email. So that email. Oh, my God. A concern resident came in today and talked about why she didn't set in at the crossing in Cache Street. And we didn't. They stated that in years past, they had asked the suggestion that they should be converted to a T shape in a series of stops. As an order to one, limit the speed which cars can travel on Cache Street. And two, provide clear way coming down the hill. Was wondering if that information can gather again a few years ago was still available and was helped forward with open to such an idea. We also said they understood that the focus of the front door is probably road safety and not changing intersection signs. He was.
It was the, the, the version of this.
Yeah. I think it all the time.
I don't know. I think it's part of the problem. I would make it. I think it's, it's bad.
Yeah.
I think it's, I mean, the way it is, that's where I remember.
Yeah.
The team or no, that's it.
I mean, I think we, whatever we have discipline to cost.
Yeah.
We're going to wait on decision on whether we're going to just pay for it or whatever we have to pay for.
What is the question? Do you just have a second stop sign? But part of that actually goes to the left, does not have a stop sign. And so most people don't stop there. Nobody, God, it's stolen. And then now the job doing. Um, as you mentioned, on what you're saying, there's a little house at the bottom that makes up a, um, a, a house on the, but I mean, which is curious if they can make that building from it and have it sell out.
Is this the first one? No. No, they never did. I've heard from several times about they never, they never, they never built a building, but they say it's going to be. Somebody at one of the deals talking about the objective of compliance and usually wants to do that. But no, they have not had any inspections, anything in the shadows from that.
So how do you?
Well, we can send Abicar up and, you know, send him a letter stating what we can. Tell the, tell us, inspecting that. Good. It changed. Well, that's, that's the same guy that owned most of that hill. Yeah. If he owns that hill. Did you buy your stuff?
No, there was a, kind of a question about that. So I, I'm the one who.
You, Eric.
Yeah. Yep. All right, so. I think if I sound like you know what I'm saying. No, this is just, this is just a repeat.
That's a little bit. Oh, this is just a.
This is just, just for review. Yeah.
We created, sorry, I thought.
So, sorry, so last meeting, last two days, they got a campus. It's a temporary campus. This is one of the permits that I think the town's quite often made my work. So I brought it and thought it might be something the select board would like to look over because it was only for a mess. We have a car during a thirty day limit. So this might be something that could be utilized, but probably to say, okay, yes, we can now. But these are some things that you have to do. You have to have time to write a note. It can only be for certain, certain amount of days. You could actually do that in sixty days, ninety days. Unless it would be building a home. And this would say, hey, you could have to be tied into this receptive system or you have to have a contract. All these things are, are the health and safety. And learning. How are you going to enforce this because I'm sure we all are aware of the current situation.
Well, we have a document to this, believe me.
We've been working on that, but it's.
Okay, my office. We have a health officer, she's my wife. And I'm, that problem is not safe. So I'm wondering like.
Well, we got this stuff and have it, we approach signing. You know, we know this is what it is. It's been competing with, you know, the term. I mean, we can work through that, we turn it for a while.
Then you can send us a letter, then you can find it, file it, then we can go on beyond that.
Can't you have a statement?
You know.
Well, we can't do that, you mentioned.
And the, 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 maybe the toll employer is working on, uh, an actual permit similar to that. That people would have to come to the town, put it there to get and have a minimal fee. And then save your parents.
Yeah, that whole summer.
They just put on there that they're here for the summer, but it is. I'm aware of that.
Yeah, and then, so they got a second thing, so, you know.
Right.
My worry is, you know, the doubt.
Right.
She could wear some.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so.
Because it doesn't leave. I don't throw a mill.
Is it legal to move houses? Is it legal to move the house?
This is so bad.
I, I do think that P E S does allow certified houses. But you have to get a permit from P E S. And they are the ones who then come and give you inspection. But I, I'm not sure. I think that those are being for campouts. Say campouts. And this is the highest level. If someone is moving home, it doesn't, it gets us kind of a. No, it stays by now then, but if they're rebuilding their home, it can, it can allow them for now for six months or a year. It's not that good for beyond thirty days that's allowing them to come for. So you're, you're saying there's some that's helping to visit and see a photo or something. You can give them sixty days, ninety days. You can give them more. You're allowing flexibility. But, you know, you're going along, but it's typically around in the zone areas and we now have it for just thirty days. But they have to show you that they're being safe. And that they're watching for the help and say, wait, you have neighbors right now. It's not a subject. Or don't you feel about the home comment? Of what? Of the, it's a, a common. They're constantly there to come and take the gray water and remove it and clean it out and bring it back. So you can get a contract as a local homeowner for, you know, two months, three months, six months.
I can't move that. Make moves.
You too, when you start growing. You have it.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I had a thought that anybody have a theme then? And then we can go to. Um, so, and then I met FEMA, Jason met FEMA on last Thursday morning. Basically went to, went to the gold bridges, um, Brooklyn Road. And right, and showed them, they didn't see all the damage they, we brought to the main ones. Um. They told us our, our goal, I guess you could say, for you, we have to hit one hundred and ninety thousand. And we can break road rage repair alone. That's eighty thousand. So, uh, and Brooklyn was in Russia.
Yeah.
And then we lost the project on mobile. So. And also it was amazing. We got all the pictures to them, to, to, uh, different climbers, to Joe. We already had, um, a copy of the bridge contract because they, FEMA wants exact numbers. So anything that we have exact is awesome. Um, and we also already had a ton of bills of already fifty, sixty thousand from United Construction and material alone. So, um, we're going to look at it. Sorry, the question, we have that second storm. If that helps.
So was there additional damage to the bridge or did you replace?
There was additional damage. Johnny sinked the wall and it's a good cop over. And it's like. Maybe it down some of the floors. It was, it was really good.
So that, that could go up to.
It's like the bridge itself?
Yeah.
I think that from my understanding, FEMA sort of do. Only bring it back to where.
Pre-visit.
It was, it was. So anything above and beyond that would be on us.
But.
But there, well, there is also. Additional stuff available potentially depending on what upgrades we do.
Correct. But also they, so what the crew did here is, what is the term? Do you typically validate or?
Yeah.
No, they have to make sure for the, the numbers that we gave them match. You know, what they'll do with the sets themselves, almost like an insurance thing, I think. Yeah, nine percent for Brooklyn is gone. This is what we think it would cost to repair.
A million years.
Oh, yes.
So, so what I'm asking you with the contract that was in place to do that bridge. Is that, are they going to be able to be followed with that? Or is it done so much damage?
I'm not sure because the, the P E S, our name was slated to happen and then the water coming. So I don't even know what the company is that, and I'll have to call all my tenants, tenants, and urgency, what, what he says. I kind of don't want to do anything there until we know what.
And that's what I would want to do. You throw a good money, not the bad.
No, I haven't started anything.
Take that original money and FEMA money. And go one step further.
And that, that would be cool.
Well, then, so moving into the C that coverage, well.
Right. And we also, um, I spoke with Jerry Merchant, I'm going to have to do a little more. It's like all of that. Um, there is a cover program that, that a lot of the towns see into and it's, um, it's a quarterly. We have to look at all of the covers in town, determine the size and length they are. And then to get on a program where there's quarterly like inspection. But what it does is it allows us to upgrade every single cover. Just as big as we want to make it, it gives us our limit. So that we don't have to go apply each and every single one. Um, it's a program for U M H. So I'll give that information, um, to the merchant manager, um, so he can get that. But, um, the C that program with the covers and mitigation, a lot of mitigation in, um, FEMA. Um, you know, moving forward, like the regular cover that should be bigger. Um, so, and they said what we want you to do is fix the pre-storm condition right now. And then, um, there's another, another volume team that goes to mitigation and, and he wants to know what areas we feel need to be increased. Um, or improved, like concrete, um, heavy and stuff. So. Here's the doctor. So I'll contact Jerry Merchant. I have two things. Um, I don't, the town office is closest to this house in the town all week. Um, it's been very good. And if you wanted, we can let everybody know that the, um, so a public trip, the dogs, the things that happen, so like. We had not reached for the dog, but you're having to do it as soon as possible. Um, and I understand that. Um, and I have a letter, I had the contract from Jason and I forwarded that to Jane, our friend. And she's on vacation last week, so she's working on that street. And I'm not like, I better find that. And that's all.
Uh, on the city road situation. Um, our city authority from Fulton Seven allows us to regulate that road any way we see fit. So effort drives up, we can regulate with the time we see fit and traffic. We can even restrict the type of vehicle traffic that's on.
I didn't show you, um, John's, I'm reading that text. From the twenty seven last Thursday. He pulled up to the block to, you know, the intersection. Um, he goes, he goes up to like, he just rules and whatnot. I mean, ran this class to like the front of the grass. Just doing the.
President. President.
I don't.
I mean, I'm happy, they have to have the road clearly mapped to do anything as far as. Charges or anything like that. That's partly.
Well, the video we enough from the state to do charges, John has to press.
Yes.
The cop was going to the last time, John backed out, pressing charges. He needs to take that video to the state and he needs to press charges. I know that, that would end a lot of situations and it's a lot easier for him to do that and stuff. We have to.
And I'm sure.
I know it's not, I know it's not necessarily much of a stack, but it'd be something. What about trucks?
There was.
Well, I mean, I mean, this is, I'm talking about a sentence. That way it's clearly determined where you can travel, where you can't.
Well, it's.
Because you're not going to put that up, because you still, but you're not going to put that up in twelve foot wide road or fifteen foot wide road. I mean, you're not going to put that up in a Jeep with fifteen foot wide road without housing damage. And then there's. Reason.
So, for right now.
We're going to close because of.
And I will talk to, um, John. And have, talk to him about President James first.
I mean, I've been up there, I know the, the stretch, it's not that big. But it does cut right to the center of the video.
What is the road? Is the road road across the road?
The road goes across, across the area that would be, would, it looks like this road because. When John Fuentes was there before he sold it, he was allowed to put lumber in there and progress. Which all the road agents pissed about doing, it actually shouldn't be. If we're out, it would be easier than anything.
But is it a classic road?
It's a classic road. So technically, you, you're going to do a road, like you see a pretty good route because the lumber, the lumber was flat and John Flanders was there and he, he, he ran his own over. And so.
So it's a classic road.
I did, I did.
So, so is it right because it's going across this grass and.
Well.
I'm just trying to get a grasp of it.
His biggest, biggest achievement that I have was pass his grass, I mean, granite, grass, ash, sand, all that stuff. Pass the gate, you know, out into the loose part of it is where he was turning it up. So he's let go of fruit, he's real subtracting everything. Technically, that shouldn't be driving it. So he shouldn't have been allowed, they shouldn't have been allowed to put lumber down.
So, so it's a classic road, so it should be contained as a road.
Right.
But a, a base of a road.
Right.
Is my answer.
Right.
And. Then your issue is he's traveling across it. It's open. It's a whole. The town is open, all the roads are closed. So then it comes down to. The use of the road. Which my understanding is that falls under fishing land.
The, the fishing also falls under a jurisdiction for road vehicles. We have a responsibility on the avenue for the cemetery.
But that. You have some sense that you need to get to. So then you got a, a tape surveillance.
Right. Yeah, no, I mean, we can regulate times and shut that down and everything, but we still have the issue. I mean, technically.
It's not going to take a ton of ground. It's not going to take a ton of ground to do that, so.
No, not really. It's probably fifty, fifty five.
There are some. Probably more of those things on the off.
And that would probably be the worst part.
So.
You know, like, I do have a.
And assuming that's going to upset the chairman, but it's already upset.
Yeah, but.
I think he has to.
Yeah. They want you to, uh, go to rock, they like. And we can pull that and, and Joe tried to screen the answer there to. The service in the winter because they had a rash sticker and he wants to come out and fix it. Cut the road and, and. Oh, you didn't? Oh, yeah.
I think you have to.
Yeah, you should, you should.
I think you have to do the first round, the second round.
Yeah.
You got one tire once the town's road was on. You've got something else and obviously wants the town road to be pro, right, as a play.
So, yeah, I, I haven't found anything in writing that funds actually have written permission from the town to do that. So.
It's still trouble, you know.
Yes, yeah, exactly. Oh, oh, oh. I may be wanting to increase the recycle tire price. This dollar based on the fact that where now the last pickup load they charged us what we're charging for. For a tire, which doesn't allow us to get to one hundred and fifty, the courtesy that they have to come up. So we need to raise our rate to six. Because they don't have the sandbars on the. Trash pit. So I'm making, we need to raise the price of recycle tire at six bucks.
And what is.
I understand in New York, they buy tires.
Or?
I understand in New York, they are buying these tires.
Yeah, that's maybe they're buying two. There's two companies that they, they try to make a playground here. And they're buying the piece of bread. to make, uh, playgrounds, and they're buying with a decent rate. They're buying with multiple purposes. Right, but it's a problem with shipping transactions. They don't have. We don't have that number one, a hundred fifty, two hundred, but I'm not going to check on some of the places, but the last time I checked on that, uh, I didn't look at the cement factories, uh, because in PA, they use it inside the kilns for the temperature. They hang them firm, and it increases inside temperature when they're making the cement. I didn't check on concrete companies around, see if they're going to. They're really well, I think it was going to be in the. But I do understand that, I don't know if I can get any information on it. I mean, we, we made people through, uh, NARA, recycling places, so far, there are best options, and tires, and either of them, and both of them are third rates. And I'm. Yeah, and our, our biggest problem is depending how many they want, it's story, because it's, it's, you know, the last time we had a hundred and sixty, and it took a good ton of, ton of area, uh, and then in the summer, we were sold, and you can see those in the water, and everything else, you know, ton. But yeah, my, I would be to consider it, I mean, like I said, last time I checked, I don't want this, this shit hanging around in the five hundred, so, pretty much.
I wasn't there.
I. Yeah, I got a nice thing.
So we're going to do, we're going to do some kind of.
We're hoping it'll be done, uh, all the way they want us to, okay, before we print up the numbers, we print some papers, print something.
Can we, uh, drop you that, so you can give it on the website, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, um, everybody got it?
This game for a good time.